Welcome back, everyone. I'm Tom Murphy and this is Trinidad Now on Trinidad Times Television. With me today is Joe Benato. Joe, thank you. Well, this is segment two. I'm sorry. You were already introduced in the last segment.
Right.
It's been a little while. I'm a little rusty. So be patient with me. Okay, so this segment, we're going to talk exclusively about economic development.
Okay.
And I'm asking everybody generally the same question. So, Joe, what do you think is the most pressing issues facing Trinidad?
Wow, that's a tough question. There's several issues that are pressing us. I think our lack of jobs that we have here is the most important one. You're talking about economic development. I think now that all our entities as far as economic development and the Tourism Board and SCRT and everybody working together has really helped improve and got our voice out to the world there. We're here in Trinidad and we want to welcome people here and we want to welcome new businesses here. I believe Jonathan Taylor, I guess that's his last name, is doing a good job. He hustles a lot for the economic development. And yeah, my vision is to see more little businesses come into Trinidad. I would rather like to see 10 little businesses come in that hire 15 to 20 people rather than getting a big, huge business in that hires 200, 300 people. And when something happens, we lose those jobs. So the most important thing we have to really look at is that, and I stated this ever since I've been on council, and I believe council has made a mistake in those years that I sat there was that we always depended on one business. We depended on our mines. We depended on our drilling. Now we're depending on marijuana. We just can't really do that, Tom. Because when something happens to those industries and they collapse, we're in the same boat that we were 11, 12 years ago. So you're talking about economic development. I wish, I'd like to see more small businesses come in and, you know, and try to help this community, really.
And there's more questions along that type. So you're going to think I've already answered that. It's just a similar type question rephrased a different way. So as we move along with this. But thinking, this is more of a follow-up question rather than the next question. So, you know, we had coal mining. We've had cattle, boom and bust, oil and gas. Who's responsible for not getting more different types of businesses into the community?
Well, that's what I just said. The council, the council really looks at things like this, but our economic development is responsible for doing this. We have to get, reach out and touch people. We can't sit there and just say, "Well, we have this much land and we're going to promise these people." We have to reach out to them and say, "Do you want to come to Trinidad? We hear that you want to start a new business. We'll welcome you." We could try to give you some incentives to start you off in business. And yeah, it's everything that, everybody has to have the right communications, Tom. If you don't have communication between economic development, tourism, council, mayors, whatever, nothing's going to get done that way.
So I think it's a fair statement to say that the hiring of an economic development director like Jonathan has been a plus to the city?
It seems like it's been helping us, yes. It seems like it's been helping us. Like I say, Jonathan has really hustled. There's a couple of things I didn't agree on with Jonathan a couple of times, but yeah, he's a hustler and I think that'll help us.
Okay. And again, I'm asking questions. I'm asking some follow-up because I want to be, I want to ask the, you know, everybody that's running, mostly the same questions. There's going to be some deviation, but I think it's fair to try to ask generally the same. So the next question is to describe your vision for the city of Trinidad for the next four years. In your situation, really, you only have two years left, whether you win the mayor seat or if you stay on council. But even that, you can project because what you do now may be in place in four years. Where do you see the city of Trinidad four years from now?
Well, you know, like I say, this is going to be an important election, Tom. This is really probably one of the most important elections that I sat through. We have had so many things that we have to look at as far as our infrastructure, our water lines, our gas lines and stuff like this. In the two years that I have left before I'm term limited, I would like to see, and we are, right now, the council is, and the city staff is working on replacing our water lines and downtown area down here, we're going to replace our water sewer and gas lines down here that extends to, I think, to your street, up to Forest Street and back up to High Street or like that. But yeah, that's the envision I have. I want to see where our infrastructure is taken care of. And I, you know, I worry about water a lot. We lose 40% of our water from our water treatment trans coming down. I want to see that, and I'm not saying we could do this in two years' time or three, but we have to look at this and get this fixed. And that's the most important vision I have for the city of Trinidad.
Well, Joe, I think I was at your retreat at Monument Lake and actually I think the plan that Gabe England had was a 15, 20, 25-year plan?
Right.
So maybe even, well, I hope we're both around here, you know, in that amount of time, but God only knows that one.
That's right.
So, so the next question, Joe, is how familiar are you with the city budget?
City budget I look at quite a bit. You know, and like I said before, I have learned a lot from other councilmen and from some good mayors. And what happens is we always have to have a healthy utility fund. We've got to keep that fund good and tight because everything that we do comes out of the utility funds. And one mayor told me before, Joe, whatever you do, you have a healthy utility fund and you have to have a healthy reserve. Because if something drastically happens there, that reserve fund is going to kick in. And I see things, Tom, that worry me about this. We only have like $1 million in our reserve funds. And if we have a disaster like a sewer line break or something like that, $1 million isn't going to get you very far. So it looks like to me that we've got to really keep a healthy utility fund and that reserve fund. Never touch that reserve fund until it's necessary. That's what really bothers me. And as far as the budget goes, you know, I study it a lot. I look at it. And I just hope that like there might be some money left over in our budget where we can give our city workers a little raise. They haven't had a raise in four or five years since I've been on council because we didn't have the funds to do it. And I always said that without the city workers, you don't have a city. So maybe we could, you know, use some type of funding there that, on the budget that we have to give our city workers a little raise also.
So a couple of follow-up questions. Everything comes from utilities. I have almost a 16,000 square foot building here. My utilities.
Right.
We have struggled at times to make the payments and things are difficult. One of the things that have put us, and myself, as one of the people that pays that utility fund is ARPA. Now, ARPA, in your time, went from a $66 million project to a $172 million project that is now torn apart or being torn apart.
Deducted, gone.
How much responsibility you and other council members, should you take for that happening?
Well, I think years ago when ARPA was created and it sounded like a good deal at that time that we follow up with ARPA and then all of a sudden this came to being that the power plant down in Lamar wasn't going to be and stuff like that. Yeah, you know, in those years, you know, we don't have a crystal ball and say, "Yeah, we're going to do this and everything in the future is going to be good." But right now, Councilman Miles has been our representative and Mr. Fabik's been our representative as far as ARPA. And I believe Michelle has done a great job and Mr. Fabik doing what they're doing. And they're still, they're still under debate, you know what I'm saying?
Right. But you talk about not having a crystal ball, but do you accept some of the responsibility for that happening or end the rest of the council that was seated at the time?
Well, like I say, Tom, at that time, you know, we thought everything was going to be fine with ARPA. Mr. Riora was our mayor at that time and Mr. Bernalli was our utility superintendent. And it seemed like everything was going to be good. But yeah, you could say that maybe we did have to accept some of that responsibility. But right now, we're with this council and with Mrs. Councilman Miles, now we're trying to retract and try to help our people with the utility bill. So, you know.
And actually, I even tried to, myself and Steve Bolton tried to use the marijuana fees.
Right. I remember that.
That wasn't legal. One other thing you said, and this is still on follow-up question, is giving more wages to the city workers.
Yes, sir.
A lot of the jobs that have been created here with marijuana industry are not high-paying jobs.
Right.
It seems to me a $30,000 or $35,000 salary is pretty good. In the city, I would say probably the average is more in the $40,000 range. In a community like Trinidad, isn't that a $40,000, $45,000? And that's not even talking about the supervisor level. They're at the $70,000, $80,000, $90,000, $100,000 level. Those are pretty good salaries, aren't they, for Trinidad?
Well, you have to really look at each department and what's going on with each department. You get like our Parks Department, that's the lowest wage that is paid. You know, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of cutbacks. And I'm going to say, in my opinion, when Gabe England was here, there's been a couple of guys that, I know of one person that passed away and never replaced his job on the Parks Department and different things like that. But I, like I say, Tom, you know, in a five-year span, if we can't, as a council, find a little bit of money to give them a 20 cent, 25, 30 cent raise per hour, you know, there's something wrong. I really do. I mean, you're saying, you're talking $40,000, $45,000, which is a pretty good job, but not all of them making that kind of money, you know?
Right. But that's probably even below average for what the city is. And the reality is it being in business is if the money's not there, you don't get a raise considering the economic times
That's right.
we've gone through. And now, really, one of the pluses has been the marijuana revenue, almost $2 million last year.
Right.
That's a big boost to our community. We'll get into that later, but here's the next question though, because otherwise I'll just start doing all follow-up questions. What are the city's main revenue sources and expenditures?
Just our bonds and stuff like that. We have to really look at what's happening right now. We generate mostly our funds through utilities. That's where most of our funds come from. And that's where it brings me back to the utility funds. We have to keep that really healthy. Just different things, taxes, your sales tax and stuff like that. That's our main generation between those two things.
Okay, those revenue. What about, what are our main expenditures?
Man, you're talking main expenditures. Hmm, that's a tough question for me. I don't know.
Okay. And I want to read this, so I say this right. Industry recruitment is very difficult for rural communities, especially ones where healthcare, education and workforce development systems are below par. What type of business would you like to attract to Trinidad?
Well, you know, before all the action with the industrial park got here, I thought that was a gold mine for the city of Trinidad. We had transportation there. We had a lot of land there in which we could have used properly. I would have liked to see some kind of manufacturing come in here. I don't care if it's making wool gloves or making a pair of socks or whatever, but we had everything there that we could have utilized as a big factory. Now, with the sale with the marijuana out there, it's kind of hard. And I think it's kind of hard to attract businesses there because you've got so many marijuana things out in the industrial park. There's just, that's what I would like to see. But as far as other things, you know, we had this tractor store that opened up in Raton. We had a tractor store that opened up in, I believe, Rocky Ford or Alamosa. And here's Trinidad, right in the middle of everything. And we can't, we can't get a store like that.
Isn't that just really similar to Big R? I think the type of store that it is?
It's, yeah, it's kind of something like that, Tom. It's a little, it's smaller than a Big R, but you know, they, with all the ranchers and farmers and stuff we have around here that, you know, we could have probably could have used.
Have you ever, Joe, being on council, and now that we have Jonathan Taylor, though, in all the time that you are on council, did you ever go to any trade shows or anything that, where you might try to seek out a manufacturer to bring them to Trinidad?
About two years ago, I was in Colorado Springs and I did go into the Home Depot up there. And I asked a couple of people up there if there was a supervisor that I could talk to. And I talked to this gentleman, like I say, this had been about two years ago. And I said, "Would you be interested, would Home Depot be interested in locating into Trinidad?" And his honest answer to me was, you know, Mr. Benato, that we don't have the population to support that. I mean, it's such a big, huge, tremendous store, you know, and it's things like that. And that's what gets me back again to the smaller businesses that we have, you know? We, you know, maybe we can attract big outfits, but little ones we could.
Right. Well, just like we used to have a model lumber where we have Trinidad builders. If you brought in Lowe's or Home Depot, who's that going to hurt?
Yeah, that's right.
And they're local, small businesses like me that, you know, we, every day is a challenge.
Right.
So bringing in chain stores, probably at this point, may not be the best choice. But the other thing that we have going on is growth in the tourism industry. And over the last two years, it's really been outstanding. Do you support the tourism economy?
Oh, absolutely, Tom. I mean, just look what we had this whole summer. We had Santa Fe Trail Days. We had the Blues Fest. We had the Mr. Woods with his cars down here. You know, that attracts a lot of tourism. It's great. I was really, just like last Saturday, I went down to the farmer's market in Chumino Park and it was packed. It was packed with people. And there's people, like I said, I lived here all my life and I didn't even know some of these people because they were just tourists and they heard about the farmer's market. They heard about the Blues Fest. They heard about the Santa Fe Trails. And it's wonderful, yeah. We need tourism. We have to promote tourism. Without the tourism, you know, it's tough.
Okay. So, Joe, if you're the mayor or as a council member, what are you going to do to help continue to promote the tourism industry?
I think just like what we have going on now with the art space and stuff like this. We have the Miners Museum. It's wonderful. We have to really, you know, pass out these leaflets and just word by mouth. And in a small, little town like this, everything is word by mouth. And that's what generates all this, you know, coming and going. So, you know, you've got like your motels that have flyers and stuff like that. Yeah, that's what would help, yeah.
Okay. And maybe I've asked this and I'm just, it's maybe just rephrasing it. The city council created economic development two years ago. What is your idea for economic development if elected? It's just rephrasing it another way. You've kind of answered it, but you just, you know, answer it again.
Well, it's like I say, you know, all our entities have to work together. And the economic development is part of this. Like Jonathan's been there. He's been to our chamber meetings and stuff like that. And it helps. It helps to get the word out. And like I say, I'm proud of Jonathan on that.
Okay. Last year, city economic development focus was on stabilizing our downtown to create an attractive atmosphere for commercial businesses. We, they're doing rental assistance. They're doing facade redevelopment grants. They're doing main street patios. They also did the entertainment district, which the Blues Fest had a very successful pre-fest the night before. What's your thought on all of those things that the economic development has done?
I think they're all wonderful. You know, you're talking about, I mentioned the Blues Fest and the downtown, the entertainment district. Those are wonderful things that attract a lot of people. The patios outside, you know, a lot of people complained to me about them, that they're kind of a hazard or stuff like this. But I think, I think, you know, people do enjoy that, Tom. You know, go out and you could sit outside and enjoy your meal and you want an adult, a beer, whatever, you know, I don't think that's hurting anything. But yeah, it's wonderful. I really, I'm really surprised with all that that's taken place.
Okay. In the last couple of years, in 2015, our vacancy rate was probably 61% downtown. In 2017, it's down to 29%. What would you attribute that to?
Well, it's like you said, you know, with the help of DOLA, with the help of CHAF, we got these grants to come in and start this space to create. And also that it seems like more people are interested in our little shops. And we just got to just stand up and support them as a community. You know, we've got like Taste Me, what's that little place down there? Treat Me, Taste Me or whatever it is.
Treat Me, Treat Me.
Treat Me, Treat Me, whatever. It's, you know, those are small little shops, but those are the people that make, make big businesses, you know, survive. It wasn't for those little ties. Those help, so.
Okay. The big issue right now, and you had a retreat recently up at the La Quinta, and I've heard some comments that the marijuana money has already been decided how it's going to be spent. Where do you think the marijuana money should be spent?
Well, you take, for instance, right now, we had that major break in our wastewater treatment plant. That's the big main sewer line that goes into the treatment plant with the sewer and water. We were called to an emergency meeting because that happened and it was going to cost the city $63,000. Again, there I go again, talking about utility funds. I was really, I was really kind of upset that the money came out of the utility fund instead of using that marijuana money to fix this main line. We're talking about the sewer line and stuff like that. It's, you know, a year, two years ago, I helped the water department, sewer department get a new camera, $10,000 camera, which indeed checks the sewer lines. And I think that since CHM2 inspected our whole water treatment plant, they should have inspected that water line too. But that's another story. But that, some of that marijuana money could have been used for that and kept our utility fund.
When the decisions come to be made about how the money is going to be spent, though, that is a council decision, all the council members, you know, by vote, a majority vote.
Right.
So whether you're in the majority or the minority, shouldn't you, if the majority of the council votes to say, "We're going to spend money on this, this and this", isn't it your obligation after a vote to move along and agree with that and support it?
Well, there you go again, Tom. The most popular vote isn't always the right vote. That's what I believe in. And when this came up, as far as the dog kennel, $400,000, I looked at that and I just shook my head. Because, you know, I know we need a dog kennel. I'm not against Noah's Ark. But the reason is, is that, man, $400 is a lot of money.
$400,000.
$400,000 is a lot of money. And the city's given them the land, which is by the swimming pool by the power plant. The city's going to build the outside shell. So you tell me, how come we have to pay so much for a dog shelter, $400,000? Plus, I hear it's going to go maybe more than a million-dollar shelter. But when marijuana was passed and stuff like this, I thought everybody, when the council passed it, I thought everybody would get a piece of the pie. But when you look at this, it was really shocking to me. And like I say, I'm not against Noah's Ark. It's just the point that you're talking about other entities like ADA, Chamber, the senior citizens that need some help too.
Several questions now. In having done construction myself, I know as one of the, I'm trying to think of, the oldest DeMauro brother, as he told me when I was doing the stuff.
Joe.
Was it Louise and Carl?
Carl.
You know, when I was doing this stuff and I was a bit younger, 20-some years ago, in my 30s, he said, "Tom, whatever you're doing, you know, double it and add even more."
Right.
And when it comes to construction, so I can understand, you know, the initial sticker shock that you're saying $400,000 is a lot of money. But when you get into construction, it's generally underbid and it's always more. That's, I think, any lumberyard or whatever will tell you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's the problem. The other question, and there was two others, the other question is, again, I'll ask, when the council makes a decision on how to spend money in the majority votes, doesn't it take away from what you're doing when you're after the fact saying, "I don't agree with this. I don't like it"?
Tom, you've probably ignored me for a long time. And that's just the way I am. I vote to what I believe is right. I'll vote until somebody tells me I'm wrong. So, you know, sometimes they look at me as, maybe I'm the bad guy of the council. But, you know, like I say, I'm not a bad guy. I just vote the way I see to vote. And it's not hurting the council. You know, it kind of hurts me when it's always six to one, six to one, six to one, six to one, six to one. And it gets kind of tiresy. But hey, if I vote, the most popular vote isn't always the right vote.
Okay. Okay, so what are we going to do? I'm going to shift gears because I could, we could talk about this at length for an hour probably. And I don't want to draw this out much longer. What are we going to do when the marijuana money goes away?
That's what I was telling you. Here we go, relying on one more business, you know? It's, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? We look, we look, say something, we look at New Mexico or we look at Oklahoma. If New Mexico and Oklahoma says marijuana is going to be legal, that's going to take a lot away from us. And like you said, only the strong survive. It's a difficult question. Yes, there we are, back step one. Like I told you, we're relying on one business and we can't. We've got to promote business while we can.
Okay. In the 12 years or so of my filming, I could probably say I've missed number of meetings on one hand.
Yeah.
Now, the next question, and I'm embarrassed because you had a special meeting last night on Monument Lake and it slipped my mind. And I, I, I.
No problem.
No, it bothers me. But that's the next question. And I might know what your answer is. So what is the solution for Monument Lake? Clearly, it needs a lot of money, more than what the city probably has available to fix it up appropriately.
Right.
So what did you guys discuss last night and what are you going to do?
Well, like I always told you, Tom, there's two entities in our town that really attract tourists. And number one's our golf course. Number two is Monument Lake. Getting back with Monument Lake, we did have a meeting last night. Four people applied for it. Two of them showed up at the meeting last night. And we did discuss this. And there's a lot of work that has to be done up there. We have set aside $300,000 for a new bath house up there, which I think is critical to bring people in up there. Listen to, I listened to Mr. Mondragon and I listened to, I believe, Mr. Russell. They all have good ideas of what they plan to do. But like you said, yes, the city's really tight and it's hard for us to get the money to do that. But we need to keep that. We cannot let Monument Lake go, no matter what. We can't. It's a tourist attraction. There's a lot of work that has to be done up there. Mr. Rob, to me, done a wonderful job in his stamp up there. And yeah, we just have to do this. But where the money is going to come from, we're just going to have to debate and see.
Maybe marijuana money.
Maybe, maybe.
All right. Last question this segment. Through the years, you've had many meetings with the county. What successes have you had from those meetings? And I have them on tape going back to 2005. And what failures and why haven't we done a better job? So what successes have we had? What failures have we had? And what can we do in the future? What do you see as far as city-county collaboration? Successes, failures and collaboration?
Yeah, like I said, Tom. Yeah, like I said, Tom, ever since I've been on council, it seemed like the city and the county just couldn't mesh together. There's a couple, couple years there that we have tried with the county and the county has tried with us, and it just never seems to amount to anything. If I was, if I become the new mayor, I, I really look at getting with the county commissioners, talk over problems with the county commissioners. The city has helped the district attorney right now, they give him some money to help, you know, promote stuff like that in the district attorney's office, and yeah, I mean, we, we try to do things, and it's like anything else, it, it always goes back to the back burner. We, we really haven't followed up with either, either one of them has followed up. And I think, like I said, this, with this important election coming up, is that, you know, we have to, we have to utilize both entities. We have to come together as one and, and try to work things out. We never had too much success with really the county, and, and it's a shame, I wished we could've.
Okay. Well, Joe, this wraps up the second segment, we're gonna lead into the third here in just a second, but we're gonna take a minute.
Good.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy, this is Trinidad Now on Trinidad. Welcome back, everyone, I'm Tom Murphy, and this is Trinidad Now on TTV, Channel seventy-one. With me today is current mayor Phil Riegel. Phil, segment two, thank you again for joining me.
Sure.
This is, of course, on economic development, most of these questions. So, starting out, I'm gonna read these so that I go through with all the candidates and it's essentially the same, except for follow-up questions. So, right now, Phil, what do you think are the most pressing issues facing Trinidad?
Economic development, just bringing, try to bring in some kind of industry into Trinidad, which is the hardest thing to do. One of the things that I think is helping, though, we are bringing something in with the Space to Create Program, which we just got allocated the dollars for, which I think is a tremendous boost, and I think we've, that in itself will, I think, try to bring jobs into Trinidad, and bring people in, and it'll be, Trinidad will become more attractive to people, from what I can see.
Well, as we talked about, let's say marijuana bust, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do if, if that goes away?
You know, one of the things that, one of the things that I know that Trinidad has been resilient about is staying afloat even in good times as well as bad times. We do need to look beyond the marijuana industry. We know that there's going to be a timeframe where maybe New Mexico may adopt it, which at that time, we'll probably see some drifting maybe to New Mexico, probably not all of it, because people will always wanna be able to, what I call, get a refill. So when they come into Trinidad, you know, they're gonna wanna have, so there'll be a certain number of limit, a certain number to Trinidad. A lot of people ask, will the gas industry come back? Well, the gas industry may come back, but that gas industry per however they sell it, has gotta get to, get up to the price where it's good enough to this, for them to start drilling again. But we need to continue to look for other revenue sources that will sustain us. Is that other type of growing type of facilities be, besides the rev, besides the marijuana industry? Will it be grow facilities for, let's say, fruits and vegetables to, that's kinda become a big thing in a lot of communities, where people are, are, growing facility, we go in and they'll grow their facility, their fruits and veg, not veg, not fruits so much, but vegetables, for a community. That's becoming a big thing across the country. I'm not sure if you've seen that, but I've heard that that is happening quite a bit. We need to, our economic development, we need to push that real hard to go out and look for other revenue sources. One of the things that I understand, and that was, I go, I refer to Gabe England when he was here, 'cause I had several conversations with him in that year and a half that I was, that he was here while I was mayor, and he said, "For every one hundred people or industries that you may try to, or you may find that look at Trinidad, you might get one." So the, the percentages are pretty low, so we just need to keep, continue to hit that pavement to try to find that one.
Well, it sounds like to me, and this is more of a follow-up question, it sounds like you've done some research.
Yes.
You've been, you've been looking into.
Oh, yes.
Opportunities.
Oh, yes, we've been looking at opportunities that are out there, there are some possibilities, which I can't say at this point in time, but we are doing some, we're trying to attract some industry into Trinidad, and like I said, it takes that, maybe we get that one. And this is one thing I've always said, if you attract one, I think others will follow, because then you'd be, they know that you've attracted something, so I think something else may follow behind that, either something totally different or just becoming attractive in that same venue of whatever you attract.
Okay. This is a follow-up question, deviated a little bit, and, and maybe you can answer this or not, but is there anything happening with Cougar Canyon?
No, no. People, we've, since I've been mayor, we've probably had four different people, I think three or four different, ah, people that have come down and looked at it, but because of the mess that it's in, it's so entangled, the, the city of Trin, we as a city of Trinidad have had to hire attorneys to try to untangle the mess that's out there, and I think once they see the position that it's in, they kinda shy away. So until they get that completely entangled, and we get someone down here to say, "Yes, I can do something with it," nothing will happen.
Was urban renewal possibly looking at it?
That was something that urban, yes, urban renewal had a, and I think that may still be in the back of their mind, but it, it's, it's a huge project.
And there's a lot of legal issues?
There are a lot of illegal issues that have to get straightened out before I think it becomes free and clear.
Right.
Because first of all, they owe a tremendous amount of taxes to the Honeys District. They're behind in, in payment for the Honeys District, which is, the Honeys District's hurting because they don't have that revenue coming to them.
Okay. Next question. Your, the mayor seat is for two years, and my question when I wrote this, was thinking about city council members for four. But if you envision, what, describe your vision for the city of Trinidad for the next four years, let's say, assuming that you were re-elected again after this next term. What do you, what would you like to see four years from now?
Well, let me give you a good, something, last year, I wanted to have a retreat, which we did have at, where did we have that, I think it was at Mont Carmel.
Monument Lake?
At Mont Carmel.
Oh, yeah.
And the facilitator that we had asked each one of us council people what we envisioned in five years. My vision is, if you look back to probably two thousand five to two thousand seven, I think we had a population around ten thousand people. We lost some because of all of the loss of jobs to, from the gas industry. My thought was that within five years from last year, I would like to see Trinidad with a population of about five, about twelve thousand people. And because of the influx of people that we're seeing right now, I can really project seeing that that could be a possibility. With the Space to Create Program that, or the Space to Create Project that we have going on, it's, it's going, it has developed a lot of interest, not only in Trinidad, but across the state, but also in other parts of the country. So I think that, that's kinda my vision, but also to bring us more development to Trinidad where people do not have to leave Trinidad for buying clothes, buying groceries, more groceries, and then other items like that.
Maybe what we should do right now is go down to Houston with flyers and to Florida and say, "You wanna get away from hurricanes?" We have an ideal, ideal situation.
Really, as a matter of fact, if you look back when Katrina hit, a lot of people moved out of Louisiana. As a matter of fact, I talked to a lady Saturday who is still here from Louisiana, and she likes it here. She thought she'd go back after, you know, all straightened out, but she likes Trinidad. So I think with everything that's happening in Houston, everything that hap, that's happening in Florida, well, there are a lot, a lot of people don't believe in climate change. I think a lot of it may be induced by us, where there's a lot more people, there's a lot more vehicles on the road, there's, you know, there's just a lot more methane that's being produced by us, by the animals that are out there, by the gas that we have. So they're talking that the sea levels are rising, we're seeing all these drastic floods and hurricanes and everything across the world. So I think, once people begin to see that all this, all these climate changes and things are happening, I think they're gonna be moving more inland. I think Trinidad, I think Trinidad and Colorado as a whole is, is prime target. As a matter of fact, this is something that I do know, in two thousand fifteen, a hundred thousand people moved into the state of Colorado.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
And two, I don't know what the numbers are of two thousand sixteen, I haven't heard that yet.
Right.
I talked to someone upstate a month ago, they were saying eight thousand people are moving into Denver every month at this point in time. The projection is that in the next ten to fifteen years, an additional one million people will move into the state of Colorado, and the majority of them will settle along the Front Range.
Right.
That is the projection, from what I'm, from what the Office of Economic Development is looking at, legislators looking at this, the people are looking at this very seriously.
Right. I, I don't know if you remember the book Centennial, which was about Colorado, I think it's James Michener, early eighties, and I think one of the, the projections that they said, you know, and they were predicting, if you went back and looked at it, you know, the growth that we're gonna have, is water was an issue.
It is.
And I, I didn't include this in my questions, but thinking about this is facilitated us, how are we with water?
You know, we, who, I, I talked, I forget, I always forget his name, is, he takes care of the North Lake Dam, the project up there.
I know who he's talking, right.
I was talking to him yesterday, and we were talking about water. And we are one of two places in Colorado that have excess water.
Right.
Everybody else is kinda struggling for water right now. I know that several years ago, Aurora bought all that water from, I think, La, not La Ana, but Rocky Ford, and it dried up some land, which was unfortunate. Well, because of all this growth that's going on in the Denver area, they are now wanting more water, they've taken water from the Western Slope over the past several years. Western Slope has said, "No more." So now they're looking at trying to get water from Wyoming and bring it into Denver.
Right.
So they're struggling for water. Pablo and Trinidad are the two communities that have excess water. This is what I was telling the gentleman I talked to yesterday. Pablo and Trinidad have excess water.
A couple of things, I know Mike Valentine has addressed it to, talked to Mr. Benato and say, "Okay, look, here's exactly how much we have."
Right.
And so it was clear, I think it was last November, December, or whatever, you know, it was really pretty profound, really, how much water we have. Probably ten years ago, I would say, the county actually tried to get a one cent sales tax, or I, I think it was a sales tax. And I interviewed Gene Aiello at the time, and he explained to me, because they were, I think, at that time using scare tactics to say, you know, "If we don't do this, Aurora's gonna come take it from us." And Gene had a large history of water involvement, and he said, "Look, it, it doesn't happen like that, they can't just come. We're a couple water tables," or whatever it was away, "and it's a long, involved, complex process." So it's reassuring, because again, we don't exist without water, it's reassuring to know that we're okay in that situation.
You know, as long as I'm there, there, if somebody comes and tries to take our water, they're gonna have a hell of a fight.
All of us, I'm sure.
You know, the thing about it is, we own our water rights, we own, we own good water rights.
Right.
We have excellent water, and so, you know, we have, we have a saleable product for somebody who wants to come here. I don't wanna sell water to somebody else.
Right.
I say, "If they want our, if they wanna plant a business here, come here."
Right.
And we'll provide you water.
Well, we'll talk about later, as I follow my questions, we're gonna talk about the losses that we have and what the plans are. And I did get a little bit off track there, but next question is, Phil, how familiar are you with the city budget?
Reasonably familiar with it, what questions do you have?
Just, just in general?
Well, let me, let me tell you this, right now, the city budget is in good shape. There are only two departments that are struggling, not struggling, but, and it's timing because of the time of the year.
Be free, this might, you might be answering this as I, as you go along anyway, but I guess this, let me interject this, what are the main sources of revenue expenditures? And, 'cause you're probably about to answer that anyway.
Right.
So if you can incorporate that into your answer.
Well, we've had a, just, and, and I got this just a couple of weeks ago from our finance director, we have had a sixteen, sixteen point some percent increase of sales tax revenue over two thousand and sixteen. Nine hundred and some thousand dollars of that was the four percent revenue from marijuana directly. I forget what the exact dollars amount was, but you said, and it was, I'm trying to think here, was it four million dollars in sales tax revenue? I may be wrong, but you did deduct that, but that nine hun, that nine hundred thousand, and that's our revenue, but there's still an increase overall in, in, in the sales tax revenue. And then, of course, with the sales tax, with the revenue over and above that we are charging the marijuana industry increases that as well.
Okay.
But all of the departments are in pretty good shape, are, are, the money that we have to have in reserves is in good shape, I will tell you that.
Okay, that's, that's excellent to hear.
Yeah, it is good, a lot of, a couple of years ago, that wasn't so.
No, I, I know, because the, the nonprofits used to come and, and the city was generous. And for a while, I, I don't think it was cut to zero, but it was.
Pretty darn close.
It was pretty scarce.
It was scarce, and whether a lot of people like it or not, like I said, the marijuana industry has helped that along quite a bit, and been able to bring additional revenue for that four percent. That additional sales tax that the marijuana industry is totally separate from that four percent that is direct, directly related. What a lot of people don't understand is that some of the marijuana at the state level is exempt from the marijuana industry, do you know that?
The medical, isn't it?
Ah, I just read that yesterday.
Right.
Yeah, it was interesting to know that.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a certain amount that is not, that's not collected.
Well, in general, I guess it's just good to know, having lived through the booms and busts here, it's just no, good to know that the city, unlike the county, is in fairly healthy shape.
Here's something that, and I'm not sure if this will come again later on in our interview, but we, up to the end of June, we had one point two million dollars of marijuana revenue that we had.
For fiscal two thousand seventeen?
For two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
We had a retreat, at the retreat, we all threw in ideas as how we could best expend some of this money. Two or three meetings ago, we expended one point three million dollars, but that was only the revenue that we'd received up to the end of June. So what I'd like to see is, if the projection is close to two million dollars, we may have another round of one-time expenditures, 'cause that's where, what we wanna do with this money. The thing that I would like to see is not expend all of that money, I would like to keep a couple hundred thousand dollars and put it in a reserve, because there may be a time where we may need, I'll give you a good example, last year, we had that sewer break on Main Street that cost us, what was it, eight, eight thousand bucks? We had a water mine, a line break up in, in Valdez that was close to a hundred thousand dollars. So even though that may come from the revenues from that particular, those particular departments, but it will allow us some cushion to be able to draw some money from some of those, from this reserve in case it's needed. So that's what I would like to see with some of this marijuana money, to build, start building a good reserve down the road.
One of the things that, and this is a, kind of a follow-up question that, that had been presented to me, at that retreat.
Yes.
You know how people talk?
Oh, yeah.
And we said, "I heard this." So, and, and I was there, I left for a while, but I, I watched it when I, I showed it on the weekends. For some reason, some people grabbed onto the idea that decisions had been made about the marijuana money at the retreat.
No. The only thing we did is that we had, I had talked to Greg, our current city manager, when we started talking about a retreat and what we wanted to expend money on, and I gave him some ideas as to what we could expend money on. At that retreat, we asked all council, "Are there any other areas that you would like to expend money on?" And everybody, we threw all of those in to one pot, we gave it back to the, I'm trying to think here, to the executive.
Committee?
Committee that they have at, in the city, we have in City Hall. They took all that, all of that information, and they came back with a proposal where they felt that the money would be best spent.
Okay.
This first round, and that's what we did. And then, of course, the process came through, we had a couple of disco, we had a work session on it, I believe, and then they brought it forward to actual, the proposal, and we allocated the money where we wanted it to go to.
This is one of the reasons I like doing this, is because people on the street, they, they are absolutely certain that something nefarious had happened, and it's like, "No, I was there, I know they didn't do that," and the budget isn't finalized till next month anyway.
That's right. And you know what's interesting, and this, this kind of off the, the subject, a lot of times, people think that decisions are made, two or three people getting behind closed doors.
Right.
Since I've been there, I've not participated in anything like that, I've not Since I've been there, I've not participated in anything like that, I've not even heard of anything like that happening. As a matter of fact, I have actually myself, uh one thing that I think a mayor has to do. You have to stay very neutral. And you can't align yourself with any particular side, because what you do, you're dead.
Right.
So that's my feeling. So I, there is so much hearsay that goes on. And maybe some of this stuff happened in years past, I don't know.
Right.
But as far as I know, I've not seen anything like that happen. Or decisions have been made, what they call behind closed doors.
Okay, let me, let me read this next one. Industry recruitment is very difficult for rural communities, especially ones where healthcare, education and workforce development systems are rule of par. Again, maybe referring back to the vacancy and stuff that we may have in the future, again, what type of businesses would you like to attract to Trinidad? Again, I, you've kind of answered it, but it's just maybe a slightly different take on it.
Well, you know, one of the things that will happen with this space to create program, it'll bring, I think, additional people into town. Some of these people will have different ideas, uh they may be able to do some investing. I would like to see, uh maybe like more clothing outlets, especially for women, because women right now are having to leave Trinidad to do a lot of their clothing. If you look back, you know, thirty, forty years ago, uh when I was a kid here in Trinidad, uh actually, when we come to Trinidad from Weston, there were three shoe shops. We don't have any shoe shops in Trinidad, I'm not sure if they're really anymore. What you call standalone, they're all built in the pennies and the Sears and the Kohl's and all these. Can we get somebody like we have right now in the bowels, can we get them to expand their product line and maybe expand their business overall? We do have incentives in the, in the city of Trinidad to allow for people can uh try to help them expand their business, to grow the industry. And I think to grow their businesses. So those are the type of things that we need to try to, because the more that we can keep people buying locally here, the more the tax revenue, the more will people will want to stay here.
So so that made me think of one thing, um more of a follow-up question. Our, our junior college here, you know, years ago when oil and gas was booming, I think the molters and some others, they put in like a heavy equipment type of thing. Is there something maybe that we could do with the junior college that would maybe help train some more people here? Is there anything in the works there?
There's nothing in the works, but I will tell you this. Like I mentioned earlier, when we first, when I first opened up, that I was on the advisory board for the Trinidad Junior College for like eighteen years for the Building Trades Program. In uh in two thousand and one there was a company out of Denver. Their last, the company's last name was Phelps. And uh they would come and talk to us and tell us what was going on in the industry at that level. And the gentleman that came down, he said, you know, you guys have a good program here. However, though, he said, there will come a time where a lot of people will drift away from this industry. And then it'll come another time where there's going to be a huge need for carpenters out there. While we are at that timeframe right now. Because if you look around town, because of what I do on a daily basis, they're, I mean, the, the contractors are clamoring, they, they are begging for good qualified carpenters. They can't find any. And we're not alone here, we're talking, uh I've talked to people when I go to Denver and other areas, they're having the same problems. They cannot find good qualified carpenters out there. So that's one area I think that we could, if they could bring that back, I think it would help. The other thing that I would like to see the college do is years ago, they used to have the electronics program. We promote, you know, that college produced some excellent electronics people that did very well, even though they left Trinidad.
My brother-in-law was one of them.
Right, you know, so you saw that. So I think that that's another area that they could, you know, the college could do very well. And there might be some other things that they could do, I think they can try to, and they're working on trying to expand the, the uh gunsmithing program. I, that's been a gem and that's kind of their gem in the pocket.
Right.
And it always has been. You know, but there are others. Vocational programs uh will never go away. And you're always gonna need carpenters, you're gonna need electricians, you're gonna need nurses, you're gonna need et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I've always said the educational system is broke, and we all know that. And I, as a matter of fact, several years ago, I talked to the then Lieutenant Governor, who was, I forget what his name was.
Garcia?
Yeah, it was Joe Garcia, I talked, had a conversation with him, and I said, what needs to happen with that educational system is that when uh a person in, let's say, by the time they're a freshman in high school, that is when your counselors need to get into gear. And they say, Tom, you know, are you motivated more toward more vocational? You know, is your wife more, does she want to do a four-year degree? And start moving them in that direction. Provide those educational opportunities so that they can have locations, or they can go on to a four-year degree if that's what they want to do. They can always change, but I think that's what needs to happen. And I think this, the college here, I think is a prime, as a junior college, I think they're primed to be able to do something like that.
Okay, okay. Um the growth in the tourism economy has been outstanding over the last two years. Do you support uh this new tourism economy?
Sure I do, because I, you know, tourism is a huge industry, I forget what the I forget what the, the state said, it came out just a couple of weeks ago, but I don't remember what the billions of dollars it was in this, as part of the state economy. We are the first how, the first stop coming in from the south. So I think we, we need to capitalize on that in any way that we possibly can. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I proposed with, uh but I think they've taken a different avenue of how they're going to do that at the retreat, and you might have seen that, is I proposed to have a, to hire an event planner for two years with a marijuana man, but I think Jonathan's gonna put it into his economic development. Because I think that one of the problems that we have here is that we don't have a one source where all this information can come into. So we need an event planners, because what, and you've seen this, that there are so many events, major events that we have here in Trinidad, and they're on the same night. So if we have maybe one person that everybody can send their information to, they could say, well, Tom, maybe it's not a good weekend for you to have yours, but maybe, maybe the following weekend you can do this. So I think that having a good event planner will help bring additional resources and they can reach out in marketing and utilize our marketing resources through the as well, you know, through that we have now.
I um have seen the people that are running the events suffer from burnout. And and so I, I think that's an excellent idea. I know like with the rodeo, through the years of doing it, those people were just beat up.
Right.
Um and so I think that's an excellent idea to to help do that and maybe take over some of their, their duties.
Exactly, and that was my whole idea, is that we get an event planner, we get our marketing lady that, I forget what, that, that worked with, with in the city hall now. And together, the, they can, they can help uh work these events and get uh the uh volunteers to help them out. You know, so that all the volunteers, because right now, the volunteers, a lot of them are suffering from burnout, I believe. So I think if we have some, a couple of paid positions and then spread out from there.
Okay, Phil, I'm gonna, we're gonna take, we're not done with this segment.
Okay.
But I'm about to run out of tape. And when you're a one-man operation, and I'm sitting here with my broken eyeglass to look up there, it's like, okay, that was sticking out the whole time. We're just gonna take a brief, a brief break and let me change the tape.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, picking up where we left off, that's, when you're a one-man band, you gotta play all the instruments. So what we were talking about was tourism and having um a, an event planner. So, and that's really the question that I was gonna ask next, is what will you do to continue to promote the tourism industry? And the answer is?
Hire that event planner.
Right.
Put them out on the road, you know, let them plan these events, get all these, get all of the various organizations that have events to send their information in so that they could say, okay, Tom, like I mentioned earlier, Tom, maybe it's not a good weekend for you, but maybe next weekend will be a good, better time for you. Or maybe they can have two events that might complement each other. You know, it works.
Right. Is, is it in the budget for next year? Is that one of your tentative plans to do this?
Well, the, yes, the event planner, as a matter of fact, I think that's where I think Jonathan is going to take that event planner and put it into his budget for next year.
Okay, all right, you, you answered.
That's what I understand, that the, that's what they're gonna do. What I had wanted to do originally, which works out, find the way they want to do it now, was I wanted to take uh some money from the marijuana money and have like a pilot year, two-year program. But I think Jonathan and Greg may have thought, man, this might work, so they're gonna put it under their budget, regular budget for next year.
Okay, great. The city created an economic development department two years ago. What ideas, again, it's just another way of asking a similar type question, but what ideas would you have for economic development if elected again?
Well, economic development, like I said, we just need to continue to pound that pavement. One of the things that I've always that we've always thought of is that we thought that people should come to us. You can't do that. You know, we need to get Jonathan, and that's one of the things that I'm, I want to try to talk to Greg about is you know, Jonathan has done a good job of the anti-delapidation ordinances and some of this other stuff that had come forward. Setting the, uh some of the programs that we have to help businesses that want to locate here and to help some of the existing businesses. But now I think comes a time that we have to go out and reach out there. Are there some of these big industry events that they have that maybe we could send him to? I know he participated, I want, I think when they had the uh gunsmithing, when I forget it was in Texas or this last year.
Maybe.
Yeah, it was Las Vegas, the shot show, he went to that. More, more places like that, that uh are geared toward economic development to say Trinidad, Colorado is here, we're willing to, we want you to come here. Those are the type of things I think we need to do, we need to reach out to people, we can't expect them to come to us anymore.
Well, I, I like you, how you said that, because I think for years, the, the anticipation was that, you know, why isn't anybody knocking on our door?
And we have to knock on their door.
Yeah, it, it's kind of the old um saying, you know, Babe Ruth had the most home runs, but he also had the most strikeouts.
That's right.
So, or asking out a girl, if you don't ask, you, you're not gonna, you know, we were both married, that's not, you know, but when you're young and single, it's like, if you don't go ask, you're not gonna get a date.
That's true.
So.
Well, that's why I said earlier, you know, that uh like Gabe said, you know, you might have to hit you know, hit a hundred strikeouts or a hundred strikes and maybe you might get that one, home run.
Right. Well, we, we certainly both have a passion for this community and would like to share it with more people. Staying on this line, and we're getting close to, to being through with this segment, but last year, the city economic, economic development focus was on stabilizing our downtown to create an attractive atmosphere for commercial businesses. We've done rental assistance, we're doing facade redevelopment grants, uh Main Street patios, we've done an uh entertainment district. It, it's kind of an obvious question, but what's your opinion on all those things that we've done?
You know, when I when I decided to run for mayor, and I can't remember if I said this, you know, when we had the uh meet the candidates night, that if Trinidad is going to move forward, we need to take risks. And some of these things are small risks, but the biggest risk that we took was this space to create program, which we can get into more depth if you want to. But all these little risks, one may fail, but you know, the, the downtown district that we have now, you saw what happened in the last month. You know, we had the Blues Fest downtown, that was huge. You know, people thoroughly enjoyed that. We're going to plan another event, and I think around the, the middle of this next month to kind of celebrate the space to create money that we received. So it's going, I, I am behind all of those programs, simply because I was one of the initiators of some of them. And with Jonathan, you know, the, the, the patios, when he brought that forward, I said, why not? He gave us a good idea, because he said other communities are using these, why not us?
Right.
We had a lot of complaints about it, but it's working.
Right.
You know, so those are things that I think, if we don't try something, we're not going to know if it's gonna work.
Okay, well, one of the things you mentioned, and you're free to talk about this, is, is what would you like, and you've mentioned before, but talk about Space to Create.
You know, uh that's been an ongoing project for two years now. Last year, I mean, we've had so many people that have participated in trying to get this thing up and running, they've done a lot of traveling, going up north. We were very lucky that the Governor Hickenlooper designated Trinidad as the demonstration project, which they're wanting, they're now beginning to take this to other areas that in the, in the state that want to develop a space to create as well. Last year, they went forward to try to get the CHAFA credits that we just received, and they failed. And the reason why they failed is the, the designation was geared more toward
Can I interrupt, what are CHAFA credits?
The CHAFA credits is what they do, is uh these are tax credits, let's say you are as an investor, they there's, they're, okay, let's backtrack, the, the current amount right now that we have is ten million dollars. And what they will do is they will go out, they will give these to a bank. And an investor like, let's say, yourself, may want to buy some of those tax credits. And you will get extra tax credit by investing in those, in that money, with that money. So it gives you a tax break.
Okay.
That's the purpose of it.
Okay.
And this will go on for these people for ten years.
Okay.
So there's an excellent tax incentive for these people that have excess money.
Right, okay.
And that's the purpose behind it.
Okay.
So uh this, this, this particular project is, is huge, I think it's a game changer for Trinidad. I think that Governor Hickenlooper uh has a love for Trinidad, I've had some, a couple of meetings with him, I think his heart is, is in Trinidad, from what I'm seeing. What's been interesting is we are being recognized now upstate.
Right.
We are being recognized, because uh last year, I think it was in like May or June, we went to Denver, and we went to visit the Office of Economic Development International Trade. And the people were there saying, what the heck's going on in Trinidad, why all of a sudden all of this interest in Trinidad? Every time we turn around, we're hearing what's going on in Trinidad, new things are happening, so to me, it's a no-brainer. The Space, the Space to Create Program that we have, I think, like I said, is a game changer, I'm not sure what else I could say about that.
Well, um it, it made me think of something else, Phil, and giving credit to Governor Hickenlooper, but we probably should give a shout out to Jay Shimino.
You know, maybe before we get into that, I will, I want to say this, is we have one person, there have been two people actually with this Space to Create Program, one has been Marilyn Luscher.
Okay.
She has been on the ground and traveling and, you know, doing a lot of different things for this. The other lady that has done so much work on this is Tara Marshall. Even though she's an employee of the city of Trinidad, but she has spent so much time on the road meeting people, going to Denver, going to other areas in the state and saying, you know, this is what we're doing with our state, with our Space to Create Program. She has spent a lot of, I mean, countless hours promoting this. We have had Michelle Miles, I'm not sure if your wife has been involved with that, but there have been what's gonna be interesting, in the middle of this month, we're going to have, like I said, a something downtown. And we're going to, we're inviting people to come down, and I want to be able to recognize these people. As a matter of fact, if you read the newspaper yesterday, we tried, I, hopefully, we didn't miss anybody. Of all of the people that were the major contributors, are the people that have really tried to help move that program along.
Right.
So that has, has been very important. You asked about Jay Shimino. A lot of people have asked me, because I'm friends with him.
Right.
And a lot of people have asked me, what does he know that we, that we don't know? About six or eight months ago, I periodically, when I go to Springs, I stop and I see him. And I asked him, I said, people are asking me this question, what do you know that people don't know? He says, Phil, I am from Trinidad, I love that community, my heart is there. He said, and I want to see it flourish like it used to be. You know, uh I think he is putting so much time and energy into this community that will never be repaid to him.
Right.
A lot of people, they have differences of opinion, but who else has ever done this? Who else has ever stuck? The projection is that when he's said and done, he will probably, maybe him and some investors, will have invested over a hundred million dollars in Trinidad.
Oh my.
Where else are we gonna get that?
Well, I, I'm biased, if, my wife and I had a newspaper, um and we lost it. I, I'm not ashamed of that. We've lost a lot of good people from the community, Danielson Design and, and other businesses. Um and I, I gotta give him a shout out, if it wasn't for Jay, I probably wouldn't be here right now. And he um was interviewing Paula for a job at Mount Carmel, and they wanted her to do a marketing job, and he was the last interview, and when it got to the end, he's like, no, you're gonna sell cars. And at one point last week, she was number one in the whole, whole
Oh, nice.
of all seventeen dealerships.
Oh, really?
You know, and they, in the larger dealerships, I'm getting off track here a little bit, that's okay, it's my program, I can do what I want. That's a, that's a big thing for us. And, and her commute to work is gonna be seven hundred steps right over here.
Yeah.
And a lot of people don't know this, you probably do, but Jay's dad owned this funeral back in the fifties.
Yeah.
And so he has a, a little bit of a, a tie here too, so. So, I, I, I'm ecstatic about what he's done. And I know I was, was that with Paula, and one of their business meetings in January, February, and at that point, they said they'd spent over thirty million dollars. And they're a lo, they were a long way from being done, and still.
Oh, yeah, you got a long way to go. You know, let me get, you know, Jay is truly an exception to what one person will, is willing to do to a community like this. I met a gentleman that, from Trinidad, a couple of months back, and he's made a lot of money as well. Very well known, lives in Colorado yet, and I went up to him and I asked him, would you be willing to invest in Trinidad? He actually shrugged me off.
Really?
Yes. He said, and actually, I'm not gonna say this, but, but there was someone else that was with me, that we both asked.
Right.
And we, he's basically said no.
Yeah.
And it's sad, that he didn't have that same love of our community as Jay, or even anything close.
Right.
To try to do something for, and I think this gentleman would have, could have the capability of doing something locally.
Well, all we have to do is walk outside here and look across, and we can see the dealership.
Exactly.
And that's just one of many projects.
Yes.
So, good job, Jay. And we did get off a little bit track, but it's my program, so I can do what I want. Okay, so the next question, um, a- and we did talk about this a, a, a minute ago or two, but where should the, the marijuana money be spent?
You know, like I said, we had one round of that one point three million dollars that we expended for one-time expenditures. We need to look at, see what areas are going to impact the community the most. There are some needs that we have done, one of the things that, like, for instance, Monument Lake, we're going to expand that money for, uh, a new bathroom facility. Which, uh, like, like last night, you said you had wanted to be there, but you couldn't be there.
I forgot, I forgot.
You forgot, okay.
One, yeah, first time in many, many years.
But one of the reasons why some people are shying away from Monument Lake is because of the bath problem. So if we put money into that bath, maybe we'll get a better turnout up there.
Right.
Uh, we have, uh, a lot, this is something that some people don't understand, they, they, they're angry at the money that we're expending on the, uh, the dog park or the dog pound or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, and they're upset, why are you putting money toward that? They don't understand that a community, the city of Trinidad, I'm not sure about other communities, but it is something that we have to provide. If, there's not a, if we want to or we don't want to, uh, we have to provide that facility. And right now, the facility that they're in is in such bad shape, they need to get out of there. We had, they originally had wanted to build a new facility up on Santa Fe Trail, but the cost was so excessive that they couldn't come up with funding. So then we came back over here, then they want, then we were talking about putting them at the old Hughes Lumber Yard. But that's not a prime area either, because there's other businesses around there. And the big problem with that is that if we, if they go in there, it's only a temporary solution. So if you put dogs and cats and other animals in there, when they leave there, will that building be, could it be used for anything else? Because of, you know, the smell and the urines and all this other stuff that go along with that type of a facility. So by law, we have to provide a facility that, you know, we can house the animals.
I didn't, I didn't know that, there's really a law that the municipality has to provide?
That we have to provide, that is part of our, do, one of our duties.
Is it statewide type of?
I don't know if it's a statewide thing, or, or if it's something that we've adopted, that's something I'm not sure on.
Okay, y- you know, literally, nobody lives closer to nose than I do, and my wife and my mother. Um, and it's not, it's not a problem. You know, occasionally we hear them when they go to feed them in the morning, but no smell, no noise, there's no other wild animals around there, it's, it's, it's not a problem.
You know, like I said, you know, we, that's just a couple of examples of, uh, one of the things that I proposed, and I never, and actually, people said thank you for it. Uh, right at the end, that was, I think it was like, three or four days, uh, before we had the meeting to approve those expenditures. That hurricane down in Houston happened. And I thought, you know, we get a lot of people up here from Texas, I think it's only right that we try to give them, that issue some money. So I proposed five thousand dollars to give to the Houston, uh, to give them money.
To relief, yeah.
For the relief fund. So they, you know, the council approved it. So that, but that was an exception as far as that goes. But there are other things that I think that, uh, I wanna propose, and we're thinking about it. I originally thought with the marijuana money to take and, uh, cut down some of the debt that we have in, in Trinidad. Well, this first round, we went ahead and expended the money to some of these other areas. But if we do have a good second round, we may wanna look at, uh, paying down some debt. You know, we have some police vehicles, uh, we have the, well, the trolley is, is from the tourism board. We have the, um, what else, we have a new street sweeper out there, we have a new, uh, fire department piece of equipment. So maybe those are areas that maybe we can cut back. One area that I, I do wanna see is that we still owe one more year, uh, for the sewer plant. Because it was a bond that was taken out, was it fifteen years ago or whatever? And so we have to, we've, we've been paying like, three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand each year, is what it costs us. So we have one year left to pay, so if we have enough revenue, we may wanna pay off that debt. So that, so if we can relieve some debt in that area, even though we're in pretty good shape, it'll give us that much more cushion to be able to put into the general fund.
You know, I remember that being an issue about ten years ago, and it's like, oh, we have a whole nother ten years, those ten years are gone, it's almost over.
So, yeah, there's like one year left, I think, in two thousand eighteen, we will, we will retire that debt.
Okay, next question, I'm gonna read two. Water losses forty percent from the treatment to delivery. Uh, what plans are in place to repair and how can we not fall behind again?
Okay, that is a really, really tough subject, uh, to deal with. And then I'm going back to our previous city manager, when I got on, I said, okay, what are we looking at as far as infrastructure? Because it is a major issue that we have here. To do everything that we would need to do in Trinidad, would cost about a hundred million dollars. That's all infrastructure, we're talking about sewer, we're talking about water, electrical, no, no, that wasn't electrical. Water, sewer, gas, uh, new gas lines, um, and other things. Uh, so anyway, uh, the problem is, is it's, this, what we're trying to do now should have been started twenty, twenty-five years ago. The average life of a waterline system, or any system, is about fifty years. The last time anything was done with water was like nineteen sixty-some, I, I can't remember exactly, I was a kid, because as a matter of fact, I was living in Weston at the time. And they ran a new waterline at that time. So we're well beyond the lifetime of that main trunk line. And some of our water mains, our water area, our water facility, our water lines exceed that, close to a hundred years.
We, they did a retreat up at Monument Lake, and I think it was before you were elected.
Yes.
Probably like, two years.
The year before, right.
Right, and, and as I recall, they had, Gabe England put in a plan, you know, that was fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years.
Right.
To, to do that, is that still, is it, is it being implemented?
What we have to do, as a matter of fact, right now, we have a, a three billion dollar DOLA match. We had to come up with one point five million dollars, and DOLA gave us one point five million dollars. And what we're doing is we're going to slip line, as a matter of fact, that, can't remember if we went, I think we already went out to bid on that. And they're going to slip line the, the sewer main on Main Street from Oak Street up down to High Street. We're going to go from, uh, all the way up to Third Street for the sewer as well. Last meeting, uh, we approved, uh, the engineering for the water, uh, in those areas. That is the oldest part of Trinidad, so that's three million dollars. And of course, we'll do the sewer, we'll do the water, we'll probably have to do what gas have to get done, and probably end up paving or doing something different to the roads. But then we need to move on to the next phase, maybe the next oldest part of town. So this is going to take many years beyond my time being on council. I hope council has the, uh, the initiative to stay on that, to, year after year, and hopefully we'll have money. Because we can't generate that much money locally here. We need to rely on DOLA and other grants to help us, even though we have to come up with matches. But we need to be able to start setting aside money, so with that, when that revenue stream is available, we have that money to match. So that we can do these in sections in Trinidad. The waterline main, coming from the north, from our water treatment facility to Trinidad, the estimated cost is about fifteen million dollars, just on that one.
Ouch.
Yeah.
A, a, a quick question, slip lining, I'm assuming that means that you keep the existing pipe in place and put something just on the inside of it?
What they do is they go in and kind of like, I think what they do is they real kind of rotor root out the inside, because, you know, it gets pretty scaly and all that.
No, I've seen the calcification, or whatever they call it, it's like bad arteries.
Yeah, and they go in and they kind of remove that to kind of help fix it up, I believe, and then what they do is they take and they put this, like, large inner tube inside. They blow it up somehow, and, and it expands, and it, it creates a whole new pipe inside of the pipe that's there. So it extends the life. If we were to take and, and have to dig up the main street line here, we would all get hung.
Yeah.
Because of the cost, and, not the cost, but the time.
Right.
Uh, because the sewer main here, I think, is like eighteen feet deep.
Oh, ouch.
Ouch.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, moving along, if I'd have been there last night, I'd know the answer to this, but what's the solution for Monument Lake?
You know, it was a good, a good conversation, I wish the two other people that had put in, uh, for it would have been there, because it would have been interesting to hear what they had to say. Uh, we have had a couple of interesting proposals, and, uh, we're looking at, it looks like they really wanna do like three-year plan. But the two people there are actually, if it works out for them, that they would like to extend that even further, if they possibly can. They might wanna go out ten years, maybe twenty years, they might wanna go out further. One of them said, I'm, he was like fifty years old, he said, I'd like to finish my term out of working, operate in the lake. Which is maybe another twenty or thirty years. Uh, Monument Lake, uh, like I said, we all recognize that it's a gem. The city of Trinidad just does not have the revenue to spend to do what we have to do. So we need to have someone that operates it, that will continue to bring that additional revenue in, so that maybe we can at least get taxes off of it to possibly do something additional with the lake. I can't remember for sure if the money that's generated is taxed at four percent up there or the two point nine percent. I'm not sure, because of being, being partially in the county, I'm not really sure about that. But we need to find someone who really wants to do something with the lake to make it more attractive. Because we know that the bath facility is in sorry shape, that's why we've expended that money to try to build a new facility up there. We need someone to really be able to, to do something with the, uh, dining area. Some of those cabins need to be upgraded, uh, there was talk about, uh, bringing in possibly wifi, so that people can, wanna have wifi. Uh, maybe doing something for adults, uh, that wanna stay there, uh, make it look more attractive to them, so that maybe there's some programs for the two, three days that they're there. Uh, so there's, I think there's a lot of possibilities, but we need to have the right management company in there. So that they kind of, instead of looking at it this way, they kind of open their, you know, they need to look at a broader view.
Right, well, I apologize, in all these years, I could count on one hand the number of meetings I missed, it just slipped.
It was one of those.
Because I was supposed to interview Anthony Mate at the time, he said, Tom, I can't be there because we're probably gonna be at city council. And then until Mr. Panato interviewed him this morning, said, where were you? And I was like, oh, so my apologies.
That's okay.
I, I, I want people to be able, you know, and kudos to the reporters or whatever, but it's one thing to read about, it's another thing to watch the, what people are saying and doing.
But Monument Lake, I said, I, I, you know, seeing it when I was a kid versus what it is today.
Right.
It's, it is, to me, it's saddening, because I remember when it was at its peak, you know, when I was a little kid living up there.
And the monument collapsed, but ten, fifteen years ago or whatever, twenty?
Yeah.
A while ago. Last question in this segment, okay, um, through the years, I've filmed, um, county and city meetings. Um, they've had many of the years have occurred. Um, and, and you weren't a part of this, so maybe this isn't completely a fair question, but I think you can still add something to this. What successes, that's maybe not a fair question to you, what do you see coming down in the future? Because I don't know that you guys have had any joint meetings since you were elected, you've only been on here, what, a year and a half?
We proposed, and we actually had two meetings at the college with the county commissioners. The first meeting, uh, one of the commissioners sat with us, or two of them actually sat with us at the table, we had a long table.
I was, I was at that one, I remem, now I remember, okay.
We had, you know, we asked, got questions from, you know, from the audience. Then we had a second meeting, and we could not get the commissioners at that time to sit with us at the front table, which to me was very discouraging. Because I, to me, that told me that, I'm not sure if they just didn't be, wanted to be part of it, or, because they were there, but they would not sit at the head table with us. The city and the county, they need to cooperate, we need to have cooperation, they need to help us, we need to be able to help them. They're struggling, we are limited to what we could do to help them. This last year, we gave the district attorney fifty thousand dollars, uh, he's asked us again for another fifty thousand for next year, which probably will do. Because a lot of what he does impacts us locally here. But it's essential, because even though the city of Trinidad is here, county is, we're in this, we're in the county. So if we can't work together, uh, we're not doing a complete job for all the constituents of our entire Los Angeles county.
Last question before I wrap this up.
Because people are always asking, excuse me, but people are asking, why aren't you guys working together?
Well, that's what I say, why do you think that, why do you, is it, I mean, I guess it goes back, what do you think the reason is?
It's probably not for this segment.
Okay, alright, I, I, we all speculate, but, but it's just unfortunate, because really, regardless, we really all live in the same community.
And there's, I, I really do believe that we have new, two new, uh, commissioners.
Right.
And I think there's opportunity there.
Okay.
I really do believe that, and I do want to, if I'm elected again, I do want to reach out to them and say, let's sit down, their chair and me as mayor. And say, okay, how do we start this dialogue, for the benefit of everybody in this county?
Okay, alright, Phil, um, we're gonna take a short break, and we'll be right back. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy, and this is Trinidad Now on TTV, thank you.